With that, I'll call the meeting to order and I'll stand for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's been a while, but our last meeting was September.
Was it really?
Couple days. I'm sure I read that at the time. Any, anyone recall, any questions, issues? If not, I'll have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 27th meeting. And make a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very, thank you. We have, under Old Business, the 18 West Genesee Street, the WT. As you may recall, we approved the plan for an extension on to build it. Not the extension that we're adding.
Addition, I am.
Addition, thank you. And this is requesting a six-month extension. No changes.
Can we ask what is the reason behind the request for the extension? Is there a delay, some individuals delay and?
Yeah, I can answer. Basically, it was for housing and kitchen.
Yep.
And the person that was going to run the kitchen for me, kitchen equipment costs escalated to the point where they decided not to do it.
Okay.
So I shifted my priorities to putting in a new brew house in the brewery and decided to put this off myself to let building costs come down. So we're still going to do the project, but it's probably going to be more of a cold rooms slash kitchen now, but no changes otherwise.
So still a potential food component?
But yeah, it's definitely going to be a kitchen, but more, it was always going to be a cold room, kitchen, probably larger cold room, smaller kitchen now.
Okay.
So basically, and I still have to find somebody to run the kitchen.
And separately, separate to the business at hand here, but if you don't mind me asking, still the food truck component, which has become so much of the culture of the, of the...
Yeah, we've had, we were going to dismiss it this year, but seeing I'm not sure how long it's going to take, you know, with material costs and everything like that, we have that started booking some folks for this year.
Okay, thank you.
I'd had to go along with that, so probably the last year that we'll possibly do that.
Got you. So the, I'm sorry, the six-month extension is from today?
The move, do we approve it?
Extension would be from their approval date.
Which, I'm just wondering how long?
That's all right, I can tell you that. April 26.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
So it's not one-year extension?
One-year extension, so.
One-year, because it says six months.
Site plan, I'm sorry, it is for six months, so it's...
Yeah, the request was for April.
The site plan was approved for a kitchen addition at WT Brewery on April 26, 2022, for six months.
That's why I say it's like six months from today.
Yeah, they had to start construction within six months.
Yeah, got it.
That move, we approve it for an additional six months?
Second? I'll second that.
So, real quick, we approving it for six months from today, six months from when they got approval? And then just because it's technically...
That's what I'm thinking, it was going to be a year from when they got their first approval.
If you make it a year from when they got approval, you're really just giving them a month expense.
Six months of the date, it would normally expire.
So that would be six.
So it's, and that is still six months.
So until April of this year, that would give me.
It's good for, the site plan approval is good for a year, right?
It's good for six months.
Six months.
And then you get your subsequent six-month approvals up to two.
So if he didn't start by April this year, April 20 something or whatever, he would have to commit for another extension.
Right.
Yeah, I might have to, you know, they got to, we got to wait for the, we got to dig in the ground, so I don't know if they'll be able to do that.
Well, once you pull...
It's going to be close.
Once you pull your building permit, then that stays the, the site plan.
But if you don't think you're going to pull it by April 20...
So if I hire, if I hire a contractor, we submit the building plans and pull the building permit prior to April?
Right, then you've got to start construction within six months.
Within six months. All right, that works.
If not, we would extend the, yes, extension.
All right, it won't, it'll depend on what the contractors have for availability.
Let me ask this, could I amend it so that, that we say that it's six months and if he runs into difficulties, that we would consider an additional six-month extension?
Absolutely, you can say that.
Okay.
I didn't want to question it, just like it was...
No, they took flying everywhere.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to.
Okay. By move, we approve the six-month extension with the option to extend it an additional six months if necessary.
Okay, I'll second that.
That work for you, Mike?
That's fantastic.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Very, thank you. Let's see. So, that was...
Mike, I'll write you up something and nail it out to you.
Thank you. The stuff that you sent us last week, Greg, anything we have to do on that?
The preliminary site plan?
Yeah.
That was just...
I didn't know if you wanted to...
This is not ready for any kind of a submission yet. He just wanted to get some feedback. This is Dan Caholen and his partners. It's a Restore New York project, so there's grant funds available. Part of Restore New York is reclaiming industrial sites, reusing them. This used to be the Jardine Foundry. And he's proposed different site plans in the past. He's proposed storage units, he proposed a senior living community with mixed, you know, commercial on both state highways. And this is his latest iteration. This is a project that's showing 288 dwelling units. He believes they're all two-bedroom.
And Greg, where is this again, just to...
This is behind the Beville Supply.
Yeah, behind Beville Supply, along the railroad tracks and backs up to the old Barnes Dairy.
Is this still reset?
Zoned industrial?
It's, it's, right now it's zoned industrial, so they would be looking to, they're going to look to combine all of these lots and put it into a planned development district. When they're, yeah, right now the board has been working on the application because the village board actually has to put in the application with them for them.
There's a school of brownfields.
I don't know the answer to that.
Even Restore New York's part, I would guess yes.
I know they've done some cleanup, but I don't know what that means.
It's kind of clearing.
Yeah, well, I don't mean the trees.
Green brown hopefully.
Yeah, that's what they have said. We'll have to...
There have been a lot of iterations to this.
Yeah, one, one...
Many iterations to that.
One huge concern on this property is stormwater. Right now, Aspen Springs, Festive Fairway, Curtis Ave, they dump into this property for some...
Wonderful reason.
Reason we were, you know, the pipe goes to the property, daylights, and in one of our last major rainfalls, what it does is it goes over the railroad tracks, kind of floods the railroad tracks, and then flows over to Genesee Street. And the last storm, the last major storm we had, it flooded the dance studio by now. And one thing we need to make sure of is that the, the stormwater, obviously they have to capture stormwater, but we need to make sure that we're, you know, finding out where that overflow is going to go with the storm events.
I would agree.
You're more than the big problem. I'm speaking for Chuck too, because, you know, he and I have walked that property and it's, it's a lot of water that comes out of Aspen Springs, Festive Fairway, and all that.
And right now, I think there's a lot of water getting stored in there.
Right, right, for the most part, it's stored.
Get rid of that storage, it's going to create other issues. You know, it's all can, anything can be done, but it's going to, there's a lot there.
Did it used to be higher grade, like when it was an industrial site?
Did it used to be higher? I don't think so.
No, I don't think so.
Because there's still a building there. It's not, yeah, it hasn't changed. And the grade does...
It slopes up here.
So, right, there is some slope to the property.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I believe the four, the four buildings in a row are going to be forced, either proposed to be four stories, and the buildings, the three buildings on the left were proposed to be three stories.
Four-story and three-story?
Right, and that, that could be vice versa, but this is just from a conversation.
Who's proposing? This is the, what's the developer?
Dan Caholen is the main partner, I believe. It's called Beville Town Center LLC, is the... Well, it's not a partnership, but anyway.
Right.
And what is the type of housing?
Right.
And what is the type of housing?
It's, this would be market rate.
Market rate, so no AMI component?
Nothing.
Be market rate, and close to above the three level, over on 370, that would all be market rate.
All the apartments would be market rate apartments.
And then the, the three structures over on...
Those buildings...
Are commercial or are those office?
Right, those would be commercial. So, he's been wanting to do some, you know, medical offices or other type of offices. I mean, they could be, depends on who, who's looking for it. Over on the three, over on the 31 side, I mean, it looks like they're just set up for maybe a drive-through of some type and another small retail.
Back when it was senior proposed, this was supposed to be a medical component.
Right. And one, another iteration he had with the apartments, he, he took, you know, maybe these two apartments down, and he had like a grocery store and a bank and, but...
So how many, how many units again, Greg, is this?
288 is his count.
And these are all one-bedroom or two-bedroom?
Two.
He said two.
288 two-bedroom apartments, market rate.
He has an apartment, a complex like this out on Bartell and Lake Shore Road.
Right, Bartell and Lake Shore.
That is done and completed.
He said the market rate?
Yeah.
Dan Caholen's not building that, but the contractor, Huber Brewer, is building the same buildings.
Same identical setup.
Is the curb cut on 31 existing?
Eh, no.
Nope. And...
Would Huber Brewer be building this one?
Yeah, that's what he said.
So I would have to probably recuse myself because they're a partner of mine and one of our two of our projects, so just air of transparency, I just...
Yeah, right now...
There's no bias, I just...
I'm not sure how close we are to any kind of submission. Right now, they're trying to get their, their grant application in. This was just to get feedback if, you know, if anyone, you know, wants to, if we can discuss it now, that's fine. I mean, if anybody wants to shoot an email after they thought about it for a while.
So I, I think, you know, as I say, the obvious stormwater concern, you know, I guess, you know, the obvious thing is, you know, there's always a pinch point of traffic that occurs, so I think the next obvious threshold or hurdle to tackle or to be addressed would be a traffic study.
Absolutely. It's two state highways, luckily it's not Phillips Street and Nice Camp, you know? So, you know, you've got much larger, you know, roads that are...
Sure.
Yeah, but how do you get out on 31 right there next to Burn Dairy?
Yeah, with 288 units coupled with a commercial component or office or whatever that may be at that morning and evening.
Yeah.
Lunchtime's different, but...
Yeah.
And they'd love to put a greenhouse there.
And who is currently the, the owner of the, is it all one parcel?
Beville Town Center LLC is the owner.
They own all, is it one contiguous parcel today or is it several?
Probably eight parcels.
Okay. And in the past, when I think you mentioned there was a former senior component that was being for the year, whatever that was.
It was not assisted, it was, you know, 50 and over.
More than active, so...
Market rate.
At that point in time, how many years ago roughly was that?
Would you say seven?
Probably we did it.
200 years. 200 years.
Wow.
200 years.
You're looking well.
200 units.
So what was the general feedback at that time from neighboring?
It was positive because it was market rate, it was over 50, it was inclusive of amenities and...
Even from the surrounding homes, the residential homes, they were...
You know, it didn't get far enough to like start sending out letters for a public hearing.
No, they just kind of...
I was just curious about the...
They just try a lot of formulaic things to see what probably benefits the market study at the time.
You know what, economically, for the owner.
Sure, there's a lot of that before you actually move forward.
Sure, sure.
At that time, the former St. Joe's Corporation or whatever it is, St. Joe's Hospital, part of their company was partnering with an agency called Embracing Age, which no longer exists. And that was going to be the, the...
They were the support component.
Yeah, the support component for the seniors. So individuals that needed services could get them.
I think they were running the medical office component to...
Right, right, and they were going to, yeah, they were going to have like St. Joe's medical stuff onsite.
In these buildings up here.
So it was a, it was a decent plan, and like I said, that was 200 units, so...
Yeah, it was kind of an inclusive community, you know, walkable and...
So fast forwarding to where we are today from a market rate component, you know, I think the most recent market rate addition within the village was, was the Elveridge Development along the...
Right, the two there and Tri-County Mall.
Tri-County Mall.
And I'm assuming they're probably at capacity, if not close to it, so that presents that there's still a demand for a market rate.
And even, I would say even seniors are, I mean, my, my brother and, my brother-in-law and my sister-in-law, they're in their 70s, somewhat disabled, and they're living in Rivers Point, you know, market rate apartments. I mean, they tried senior living and it wasn't for them.
I think from the research we see in the projects we do, which range from hospitality to market rate to high-end residential, to affordable housing, to supportive housing, is there's kind of, the reason there's a bit of a housing shortage, not the only reason, but a reason that there is a housing shortage, is because right now we have a glut of baby boomers who are retiring and their houses are paid off, and they're staying in their houses because it's cheaper than going to a market rate apartment.
And coupled with Gen Z who are less committal.
Right, so...
Or they're, they're active enough to take care of their home.
Well, but they can also afford, a lot of them, pay for help to take care of the homes, and they can still stay in their home more cost-effectively than moving to a market rate apartment. And so now we have all of these homes that probably would be turning over that are not, and that's contributing to, you know...
An additional component, yeah.
It's everybody 65 and older that's messing this up.
Tell them it's got to screw it up.
But that, I mean, that's, I mean, that's, I've read tons of information about it and that's, you know, that's obviously not all of the problems, but that's the big driver. And there are so many boomers that are retiring now that it's just, it's flipped the card table over.
Those boomers.
Apartments, and that's most of my runnings is that.
Yeah, market rate apartments, yeah.
Med and ads, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions about this? I'm sure we'll see more.
Yeah, I apologize.
No, it's very good.
Good question.
All right, that will move on to other business. I put on here just for Phillips to debrief the, we haven't met since...
September?
Yeah, September. September 27th.
Yeah.
The village board had before it, the PDD voted that down. There was a, a request that night to consider, actually it was, it was a change to R2, which was defeated. And then there was a motion to approve a PDD, and that was a through-three tie that, and the mayor didn't vote, but he said if he could, he would have voted no. Just to give you, just to close the loop on, on that. And I think that whole conversation then led to the moratorium conversation that I emailed everybody about. And I haven't, I saw preliminary, and I think there's now a discussion to make it a zoning change moratorium.
Well, on the village board side or just...
On the village board side. Not a moratorium, a fall construction.
Right, during the work session, Bruce spoke off and said, you know, we were discussing some of that, and Bruce said, you know, I really think it should be a zone change moratorium, not a moratorium on anything. I mean, if someone wants to go into a zone that allows single-family homes and apply it to the planning board for that, you know, something that's already, you know, the use is approved in that zone, then that should be allowed. So then it seemed like a lot of the board was in agreement of moving in that direction. So, you know, I didn't know how much we were going to be discussing about the moratorium, but it would probably be nice to have a written recommendation, even a resolution from this board.
Yeah, and that was my intent. You know, with, with the whole project on, on Phillips Street, we went back and forth, literally, and including our, one of our last sessions where we actually walked through the kinds of things that we were considering, you know, that approving for a PDD, developer was here during that discussion. Regardless of how you felt about that, I, my biggest concern about the Phillips Street project was the process, which was kind of convoluted.
Yes.
It got kicked back and forth, and that alone can be a big deterrent to development, just people, you know, shrugging, though I don't know how it's going to work. I think that this board did a good job of assessing all the various pieces, giving recommendations to the village board. Ultimately, we didn't have the discussion to, you know, that would have pertained to a specific site plan and all that yet, but I think we set ourselves up for that, to do, to do that and do that step. When I first heard about the moratorium and it was going to be larger, of course, I emailed everybody and thank you for all your comments. I think it was pretty unanimous. But again, at a critical time in the county, as Mike was saying, with Micron and everything else, I don't think the village wants to send a, just a flat message that says closer business, close to unthoughtful business, yeah, but we're already doing that. Right, so I, I think that we are, as a planning board and as a village, prepared to, you know, entertain any of these projects that way. So I would like us, and for everyone's agreeable, please go away to weigh in, sending some kind of recommendation to the village board based on that. That, I personally think that a moratorium on zone changes is reasonable at this time. The idea though of six months, you know, for a master plan, it's something that I actually started nibbling on last year. You know, a master plan project is at least two years, two to three-year project. Six months doesn't give you a whole lot. With the caveat that the county is currently going through the plan on Adaga, which is sort of a county-wide thing, and they may well have some kind of data at the end of six months that might help contribute. It's not village-specific.
It might take six months to find the individual that helps you do them.
Yeah, right. But yeah, there's a big expense to doing a master plan, and the expense isn't just third-party hiring somebody, it's village staff that actually has to pull a lot of documents, paperwork, numbers, all that kind of thing. So I don't know about the timeline of a moratorium on zoning change, and I entered, you know...
Well, I was going to say, one of the, one of the lines in that, in the proposed moratorium stated that individuals can, you know, request an exemption or request a waiver from the board, you know, for that moratorium, but that was, you know, when they were looking at a complete total. I mean, if we leave that in, I would think that certain, certain items could go in front of the board and then they could weigh their options.
Really, waiting from a, from a planning standpoint, you, you don't have to, I don't know why you need a zoning moratorium. And the reason is that the, very simply, the village board can say, we're not even interested in entertaining it.
Right.
So it's, you know, it's as simple as, you know, because if you, if you do moratorium, then you do exemptions, now you're kind of setting precedent, and why is, you know, standing to get exempted?
Well, they already, yeah, right, they already have that power.
They already have that power, so I mean, then, you know, I don't know if you can even do the exemption thing without really raising issues.
And...
And where would you feel like a project like this fall in? Because if this gets, gets, you know, you know, I don't know if it was like probably four and five, they're probably looking for $20 million in grants for a whole $20 million project. I mean, all of a sudden, you got a zoning moratorium, they're kind of stuck, you know, you may want them, but...
I forget how many millions it was.
20, 20 was flying around, I don't know if that's the...
I think it's even more than that.
More than that.
I think there's more than that.
Well, the project could be more than that. I mean, this is, this is a...
He's probably looking for 20 and great, yeah.
I mean, this, this could be a $100 million project that, you know, with the apartments, 28 apartments is...
Is this exempt already though?
Well, right, that's the interesting thing is...
Yes, exempt.
They don't have an approved...
They haven't even, they haven't even put an application in.
No, but the board is, but the board is actively pursuing their grant application.
But they're pursuing their zone change.
But nothing, that, nothing has come for, for any of that, so...
So I think if today you put moratorium on there...
Right, yes.
They're not in the door yet.
Correct.
And, and I've seen moratoriums where even if they've come in the door, you know, the moratorium could, and I've not, I've not seen a zone change moratorium, I've seen planning moratoriums and then...
The Rezone Syracuse is a zone change moratorium.
Was it?
Yeah, but is, that's been going on since, I think...
They've already got the code.
2018, maybe?
We may not want to...
I know we got a project in under the wire 2017 because Heather Lamedola wanted to clean up the site because it was zoned five different things, lots right next to each other.
And there, if you look how theirs is functioning.
So that was 2017. It's got to be 2018 or 2019 that they started the Rezone Syracuse and put a moratorium on any zone changes, and it's still not, they still haven't completely released it.
Five years?
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's rumor of soon. I just heard that again today.
In your professional opinion, is that stunted investment in projects?
I don't see a huge amount of it, but one, one thing that I was working through myself is if you put a zoning moratorium on, you might want to include special use permits and variances in that same moratorium, but the other thing that I was, I didn't see that.
No?
Well, this isn't a zoning, anyway, this is a building moratorium. But, but what I was trying in my head to reconcile, and I don't have the zoning map, is if you do that, how many properties within the village are zoned R1 that are large enough to support a development that we would be concerned about? Did that make sense?
Yeah.
How big of an issue is it?
You know, is it, is it all, there's three, okay.
Is...
I couldn't find, I couldn't find the zoning map on the website.
There's four, oh, what's that?
I was going to say, there's at least three because there's the ones up, there's the ones on the south side, a couple big ones on the south side.
There's the end of Locke Street.
And then there's Phillips.
There's Phillips Street, there's Gentry, and there's, there's... I can't remember how many acres, seven acres at 94 Syracuse Street behind Kansas Village.
Oh, yeah.
And there's, there's another one that's being farmed, is that the one that's currently being used as...
On the south side?
Yes.
So that's all R1A.
The Johnson property?
Right, right.
The Johnson property?
Well, it's not the Johnson anymore.
Right, okay. Us old people know it's the Johnson.
Heritage Homes owns that now.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, so that's 53 acres. That has been sold to a developer. That's R1A though, that's single-family homes. And then we've got another at least 50-acre parcel... And then we've got another, at least 50 acre parcel or 50 acres that are currently being farmed.
Well, and I'm also thinking about.
Yeah.
The inverse, that yes, you don't want to change from a use that you currently support to one we don't, about one that we kind of don't but wish we could change. And I'm thinking of, there was a proposal someone presented for putting in a Dollar Store on 370.
Right, that's a B1 and Dollar General is probably still moving forward with that. I have gotten some questions about signage and things like that, so.
Right, and it's B1, which is next to like Doughboys or.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
There's, there's three parcels there basically that are.
Right.
Zone B1.
Where in looking at that, my immediate instinct was, eh, it's pretty residential and it's sort of a holdover B1 as opposed to, you know, some other stuff. So, so if there's a moratorium, ultimately the point, that if the village wanted it to be R1 or R2, it would be stuck at B1. Right? So it's the, which leads to the sort of arbitrary nature of now what are you deciding on what basis?
I think that's less likely.
Yes, but that's, that's a property that, you know, if the village passes a moratorium, moratorium on zoning changes, that means it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be able to change the zoning of that B1 lot during that time and a developer could go, I own it, I'm gonna.
Right, my, my bigger concern is size of parcels.
Yep.
Because that's, you know.
And that's a.
If someone wants to build a house.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's off the table for the.
You know.
If it's a single, if it's a single.
I mean, if I want to rebuild my garage, this moratorium, moratorium won't let me do it.
The first, the first iteration of the moratorium was pretty much, why am I here? I, I, you don't need to go.
Well, actually, I thought we were all gonna get into this.
Seriously, it's like, you're, you're not gonna build anything? So I started looking at like, this, this is.
Well, there are exceptions, but.
Well, then, yeah, then it got into different iterations of, okay.
Yeah, the exceptions.
I'm just not a big fan of governing by exemption rather than, I mean, I understand periodically.
But I guess that hangs together as long as everybody agrees on what type of development we want.
Yeah.
And if six people here don't, you aren't gonna get what you think is right.
Right.
So, I don't know, maybe it needs to be bigger than all of us.
Right, but I'm saying that by making determinations by exemption rather than, we have a code office and code and process.
Place.
Set up to do that very thing and then you're preempting it with exemption process.
I agree.
Well, it's a way of mitigating the impact of, of the moratorium.
Right, or you just say, you already have the authority, the village, you don't need a moratorium for zone changes because you already have that authority.
Yeah, I think they wanted to just put the brakes on until we could go get our master plan done and, you know, not set any precedence or make any errors that we wish we could reverse later. I, I, I think that's where they're coming from.
Yeah.
I don't agree with it, but I, I'm sure it was, it, it feels like it was maybe reactionary.
Right, right. So, you know, based on that, and feel free to continue to weigh in, do we want to make a recommendation to the village of no moratorium, a moratorium on zone change with the caveat that you don't really need to do that?
What, what do you think, Joe? I mean, is that something that, you know, that this could be advised to, you know, you already have this authority, why do you need a moratorium?
This board is free to give any sort of advisory opinion they want to the town, to the village board.
Sure.
If they wanna give an opinion as to how they feel about a moratorium or not, that's, that's fine. I'm kind of in an awkward position because I present both the village board and the planning board, so I don't wanna weigh in too.
But for us, I, I think we're pretty unanimous that we don't want a, we, we wouldn't support a full building moratorium.
No.
Right? So I think we could make stipulation one, because I don't know what's, what ultimately, what draft is gonna become, whatever. Secondly, we think a, think it's reasonable to do a zone change moratorium, however, the village board, we kindly remind it, already has that authority.
To approve or deny.
To approve or deny any change. Now, more broadly, we would, I would recommend the village board go on the record as a body to say, this is the kinds of things we're about to study and we would recommend. Right, because projecting.
I don't disagree.
What exactly?
I'm thinking of practice.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
I, I, I don't disagree with you at all.
Because I.
I just feel like. I'm getting in trouble here. I feel like there isn't a consensus of people that will speak out about how they really feel.
Right.
Or what they feel is best for the village, not how they feel personally.
Yeah, because this, I think we are all in agreement that the long-term master plan is a very good, and we, we would like to be part of that, if not lead that effort.
Yep.
And work in partnership with the village board on shaping that, meaning specifically, you know, joint meetings.
Yep.
With them to get a clear idea, to get a clear idea from the mayor.
Right.
And I think.
And we need to work in concert.
Yeah, and not every two weeks, but in a working session. But, you know, it was clear, the developer, Phillips Street, they started that process about a year ago and had conversations with the mayor, me, Greg, others.
Yeah.
And it was unclear pretty soon after that that there wasn't going to be support from the administration and the village board.
Right.
That whole process could have been ended.
Short cutted.
Saved a lot of time, pain and embarrassment.
I agree, that was exactly what I was saying.
Right, so.
Which you picked up on, thank you.
So by giving a right, having the village, you know, publicly state, you know, broadly, it's intent.
Yeah.
You know, we are fully on board with the master plan idea, working with the county, doing broader traffic study, not, and on the traffic study, you know, these developers have proposed their own or they did it in Phillips. We're beyond the state where an individual developer can do the kind of traffic studying that the village needs for all of this development. The village needs to do one that's much more broadly applicable.
Right.
Right, so it's part of the master plan that a traffic study, working with the county and the state because the county and the state are big parts.
Some sort of finite utility need would be.
There's been some talk about the water and sewer. And it's, you know, it's not an easy.
Yeah.
I mean, it should be done, no doubt.
I'm tired to hear it, yeah, we think it'll take it, it'll do it. No, we need to know what it is.
And that's the beauty of the master plan, it takes all that information in, in mind so developers can go, yes, no, like they'll know based on the capacity and other things.
One thing we can do is like, I gotta look at more detail, I've skimmed the traffic, the village's traffic, I call it study that was done by SMTC a few years ago. But we can see if there's some ways to add to that or to update it in SMTC, we'll do it, they'll do it as a project, we just have to propose it to them. They're always, every year about this time they start looking for projects.
That was the one where they were taking all the trees down on Downer from about my house to the corner.
You don't want them to do it.
And they were turning.
I, I think, but I mentioned the study, the first time it's out of, the board member that, that moved to the village was over my dead body.
In Tree City, USA.
So, but, but they'll do different planning studies, I mean, you can see what kind of numbers you have.
Yeah. No, I, I think it's important to do that.
It's a bigger work study than any developer's gonna really will do.
You can't just do spot check.
More resource.
No.
Yeah, we, because we can't.
Because we all know the back way is around.
And if it really became an issue, we can, we can, we do, we do big traffic studies, we could do a, a model of the entire village that can be plugged into as projects come along.
Right.
And just keep updating it and keep plugging things in.
And I think it would be good to have it as you're considering a project, this study.
Yeah, and it'll go, you know.
I mean, we're still gonna require them to do it, to do a traffic study, but I think having the information in advance of someone coming to the board would be important information.
And you can compare.
Yeah.
We, we know where the developer's.
You can provide us more info on?
I'll call them, they're doing, they're doing one for us and get us right now that we propose.
Who's doing it?
SMTC, and they'll do, and there's no cost to the village, I mean, that's, that's the beautiful part about it.
Yep.
It's, it's a free, you're already kind of, you know, if we don't like it, we don't use it, whatever.
I won't turn Phillips Street and Downer into four lane roads with turning lanes?
Make sure it's not Regent's Week, make sure it's.
You know, I, I don't know, I can't remember what year that was done, but you know, every few years the.
I have a file about this.
Things change. I, I, I won't do a SMTC that. But it sounds, I could find out more about it.
Yeah, that'd be great if you wanted to send something Mary Ford around to us and if we want to make a recommendation to the village board based on that, I think that that would be appropriate. So, I sort of outlined, do you have enough there that?
Oh, yeah. But I don't have any, yes, we gotta know. Do you wanna make a motion to do any of this?
Yeah, I want, any other discussion on that, anything to add?
No, I think that's a great start, you know, to be proactive. You can't close the door after the horse gets out.
Right. You can, but doesn't do very much.
It's not really that useful, no.
Have a, a motion to provide that, written letter, I guess, written communication.
Letter of recommendation.
To.
To the village board?
Yeah. Steady the aforementioned stuff.
I made a motion to provide the recommendation, recommendation letter to the village board.
I second.
Who's second? Chris?
I'll go with the mayor, sorry. Okay, opposed?
Four.
Four.
I was like, what the hell? Where's the drama?
Always happy you want it, okay.
Always one of them, I'm sure.
Yeah, this thing got, this was the county's plan on Adaga. The word training.
Oh, well, sorry about that.
Sorry. I also thought since it's the start of a new year and I didn't do my training.
You're fired.
I know. I also learned it's not audible, so, but as board members.
I did mine.
We are required to do, complete four hours of training each calendar year. What we usually do, and I wasn't able to go last year, which is why I'm just. The annual planning symposium, which is hosted by Adaga County Planning Federation, and it usually features the county executive as a keynote speaker, he may have been there this year. It is March 9th from 8 to 4:20. The village will pick up the tab because there is a fee for this. And I highly recommend it.
It's, it's really good training.
It's good, there are different tracks, so you can attend different things that interest you, like they have everything from, so you're new to a board.
There'll be something on rezone Syracuse, I bet.
Yeah, probably.
A lot of it's, yeah, a lot of it last year was geared toward the Adaga County's comprehensive plan, I'm sure.
Yeah, they'll have some updates.
Yeah.
I have a list on my desk if you want me to make up a list.
When?
I'm sorry, what the.
Classes are?
Classes are, thank you, yeah, and I have that sitting on my desk.
There's, if you go to ongov.net, there's a big thing on the homepage that you can click on and it'll give you the thing. I think the procedure we followed in the past was, we went there, looked at what you wanted, let Mary know which one, it doesn't, you're not, you don't have to go to the ones you sign up to, they're just trying to get numbers based on the attendance of those things. Mary will do the actual registration.
And I think it has to be in by what, February?
I didn't see that.
24th, I think it is. If you want, I'll go get it.
When is the latest we would need to let you know by?
I have to send a check in, so I at least needed a week before that so that I can send them all the information. Let me go get the list.
End of January.
They usually have an early registration discount.
It's in the, it's in that email you sent Greg, I think there's a link to it in here. I looked at it today.
All you really need to do is, is let Mary know that you're going or not, and if you're going.
I will not be going.
Which, which sessions you'd like to attend.
For folks that haven't been, it is well worth spending the day.
It is. And not just because it's required. If you do not attend this for whatever reason, and that's up to you, there are other online and in-person trainings throughout the year that you can make the four hours.
About, it's usually about a week after whatever, those presentations are then available on their website.
Yeah.
And it's, they're usually just in the form of a PowerPoint, so you can go through yourself and document your, you know, what you've, what you've done. It's, I mean, it is four hours that they say that you need, it's not real, like I said, it's not really a police state when you look at the training you need. But, I mean, you know, anything you do is, you know, is great for that training, so last year's sessions are on the website, I sent that to you, didn't I? Or I sent that, I think to the whole board, but anyway. So anytime, you know, if you have time to sit down and look at a, you know, PowerPoint presentation, you can.
Early registration is February 17th. Anything after that is a little bit more money, it goes from 75.
So in terms of what you know, Mary, it would be, in terms of just to give you the schedule.
Yes, it is. And you can, I can have it copies if you want. Yeah, you can get it in to me by.
Before you.
Yeah, January, the first week of February, I can get this filled out, get a check.
Yeah, and to get it in to them.
So we, like the February 10th or the 13th?
Presenting it?
January 9th, same.
It's usually your dad.
Let's give him a few more days.
That's why I was stating.
For you folks.
Private. I like that one.
The tap is the Friday.
Basically, environmental quality review is a good one for folks that haven't been through that.
My granddaughter, which is my job a couple days a week.
So we'll say by February 10th, if you can let Mary know.
That should give me enough time, shouldn't it, to get a check?
When does it have to be?
17th is early registration.
Okay, yeah.
The 10th.
Yeah, private. By the time you get a check processed.
Well, we don't have to have the check right away.
Right, that's right, I have to get this in.
We can take the check with us.
Yeah, that's true too, but I need to get this into them, so, the 10th, February 10th.
Or sooner.
Yep.
We just have to be registered before that to get that first.
And we notice that some of the courses that have been free in past years are now charged. So let us know.
Yeah, I mean, for this type of training, it's, yeah, sorry, we're talking.
That's okay. I was saying that last year, years, prior years, some of these courses online were free, they're now charging for them. We do have a line item that if you do take these courses, to let us know. We have a small budget for it, but if you want to get reimbursed, Terry, you did all yours, I don't know.
I did free ones.
You did free ones, but they are something.
Yeah, we had sent out a NICOM training, usually, I just sent it out because usually NICOM has always been free.
But it's not.
This time it was like $30 or something.
Mine were AEC daily or something like that.
And for those who've never been, they have like continental breakfast, there's coffee and cookies.
There's snacks all day.
There's a nice lunch that is usually.
Okay, because that's the reason we.
Yeah. Parkinson's.
Yeah.
Yeah, parking's a challenge.
Yeah, we want.
It's a burden.
Is it?
The lunch is terrible.
Free lunch can be done.
You know it.
But, yeah, it's a good time.
It's terrible.
I always see if anybody wants to carpool, but everybody's different, so.
You get free parking?
Yeah, I know.
I'm just saying.
Parking's like a garage.
Yes, if you.
Well, a lot of people maybe go to work.
I know.
Working, you know, some of us.
Working at the wedding. Yeah, finding the parking garage is a little bit difficult. But I don't go downtown that much, so. I mean, the on-center, but that's easy.
It's a, must be a Thursday. Because I get, yeah.
That's what.
Yeah. That's a Thursday, I try to make the afternoon.
Sometimes Mondays.
It's the 34th, and what?
34th.
If anybody wants a copy of this, I'll make it before you leave.
Yeah, it was in that link, I looked at it today. It's in the link. I'll be over tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll get my password back for the laptop, too.
Did that girl from the press give you back that paperwork with our passwords on it?
Nope.
She never gave that to me either, and I don't know what it is. Kevin was trying to get it.
No, we have the, you mean for the guests, I have the other one.
He needed that to get it.
I'll get it tomorrow, I'm coming tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
I'm just gonna get on, because it's easier to read my emails on my laptop than my phone, but.
Got to update his social media.
Tweet. Yeah. Anything else before we adjourn? Thanks, everybody.
Good comments, everybody, that was great. Even though I spoke before I totally read it. I was like, wow.
Our next meeting is the 28th. Is this my mother?
Twelve.